I call the Committee of the Whole to order. And we will start with Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13. The Council will now receive a presentation from Kat Zager, Director of the Utilities Department. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Kat Zager, Utilities Director. I'm presenting the ordinance adopting the budget for the operation, maintenance, debt service, and capital improvements for the water and wastewater utility departments for the City of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2026. Our water utility budget totals $23,119,000. And our wastewater utility budget is $34,590,000. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. The floor is now open for questions from Council members. Under Bloomington Municipal Code Section 2.04.250 (C), there is no limit on how often a member may speak, however, no member may speak for longer than five minutes at a time. Any questions from Council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I asked this in the written questions, but I -- and you answered, but I still don't understand, so I'm hoping to get some clarity. And that is, the extensions and replacements under Section 1 of the water utility is a negative amount, negative $603,000. Why are we budgeting a negative amount?
Yeah, sure. So I'll answer that question. Also, another question I received around the same topic. So when you look at our budget, there's actuals and then our budgeted amount. The actuals are zero or close to zero because we don't charge things to extensions and replacements. Extensions and replacements is how we balance our water budget, which needs to be a net-zero budget. So when we have a positive extensions and replacements, we use that for things like unexpected expenses and maintenance. When it is negative, it's indicative of a shortfall, which I discussed during our budget presentation. That shortfall, we are planning on taking a one-time loan from our sewer utility to make up for that. Does that help or ...?
So what -- why is -- why is it called extensions and replacements? Is that just historical?
Yeah, it's a historical name for it. It doesn't actually refer to extending or replacing. People assume it means it's physically extending and replacing pipe, but that's not the meaning of it, no.
So it's its own fund?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other Councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thanks. I had a question, forgot to ask it during budget, and that is, I'm curious to know what our current spare capacity is of our water treatment plant. In other words, where are we in terms of it's -- you know, we had improvements about 10 or 12 years ago, maybe more, 15 years ago. And I don't think there have been any other expansions since then. Where are we? I think the maximum was about $34 million per day or is ...
So the maximum capacity of our water treatment plant is 30 million gallons per day. We average around 15, with highs around 19 to 20.
Okay, so we're well within our -- we have a lot of spare capacity.
Yes, we maintain capacity.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now take public comment. Members of the public may provide comments. If you are in chamber, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, sign in on the sheet, and speak directly into the microphone. Not seeing anyone in chambers. If you are joining via Zoom, please raise your hand by using the Reactions tab or send a message to the host. Each speaker will have three minutes to share their comments. Do we have any speakers on Zoom?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Any takers in the chambers? Okay, in that case, that will end our public comment period, and I will return the floor to Councilmembers to ask any additional questions or provide any further comment. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So just to clarify for the public, this budget does not assume any rate increases. Is that correct?
Correct. This budget does not assume a rate increase.
Okay. And we'll be talking about that soon in this body.
Yes, we will be talking about that soon here.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, in that case, I will entertain any motions at this time. I move that the Committee of the Whole make a recommendation to the Council for the adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13. Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Sulek?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Thank you.
With a vote of 7-0, that motion passes. And now we'll move on to Appropriation Ordinance 25-12. And the Council will now receive a presentation from John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Transit. Mr. Connell, if you could introduce yourself for the record. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. John Connell, General Manager of Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation. Respectfully requesting approval of this appropriation ordinance establishing the Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation's 2026 budget. There are no changes been made to the 2026 budget since the August council meeting and presentation. The total of the 2026 budget is $19,383,402, with a proposed property tax rate of .0371.
Thank you so much for your presentation. At this point, the floor is open for questions from Councilmembers. As a reminder, there is no limit on how often a member may speak, but no longer than five minutes at a time. Any questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, how does the 0.0371 rate compare with the 2025 rate?
So the 25 rate was .0403, but the 25 budget was $32 million as opposed to $19 million. So the 2025 budget had a significant amount of capital programming. So it's -- there's a reduction this year of, I believe it's 72% in our capital budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I have a question about the Budget Form 2, Estimate of Miscellaneous Revenue. There's two parts of it. One is Revenue Code R119, which has the state, federal, and local payments in lieu of taxes. And in 2025, that number's zero, but then in 2026, we're expecting over $6 million. And I just want to understand first where that revenue source is coming from.
Okay, I'm sorry, dropped these. Which form are you on?
Budget Form 2, Estimate of Miscellaneous Revenue. That's what it is titled in our packet. And then it's the third line that in 2025 was zero, and then in 2026 is estimated to be six and a half million almost.
So the 6 million, 6.4, that includes the ED Lit that we received from the city in addition to the PMTF, which is the Public Mass Transportation Fund.
Forms of revenue, though, for BT because ...
They are existing. I'll have to check with our controller. I'm not quite certain of why that would be a zero.
If you could give me that answer of why 2025 was zero, that would be great, or if that's an error on that form. Yeah. I have another question about that form too, but I'll yield back to another member if they have a question.
Do any other Councilmembers have questions at this time? Back to you, Councilmember Stasburg.
Okay. And then on that form, it also, in the second line from the bottom, the other charges for services, sales, and fees, that's also increasing by over $1 million. So I'm just wondering if your -- are you raising rates, or do you think that -- or is your ridership numbers up? Like, what accounts for that, just over $1 million of increased expectation for revenue?
That is ... Let me go back to the revenue side here. Oh, that is the increase from the partnership agreements that we have. That includes the Monroe County Service as well.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Great. And Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Stasburg for her question about the huge increase in the state, federal, and local payments in lieu of taxes. I wonder if -- I'm looking at the next line, federal and state grants and distributions, which was $14.7 million is last -- or for the second half of '25, and is down to $6.4 million next year. I wonder if that line was split up for next year?
Yeah, so that includes the -- so the federal -- the federal grant that, like I mentioned in '25, we had -- the budget was almost twice of what it is this year, and that was driven by that infusion of federal dollars that is not being reflected in the current year. So you are correct there. That does have an impact on that number.
Okay. But it -- yeah, but it's not -- it's not part of the pilot. Yeah, that's totally separate. Okay, I understand. That line is so much decreased because we just don't have any -- as many grants coming in next year.
Yeah, well, our capital budget is 72% lower this year than it was last year.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to getting the answer for the ...
Okay, I can --
The state and local payments. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we will move into public comment on Appropriation Ordinance 2025-12. Mr. Connell, thank you so much for your presentation. This section constitutes a public hearing held in accordance with Indiana Code Title 6, Article 1.1, Chapter 17, Section 3. If you are in the chamber, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and sign in on the sheet. If you are joining via Zoom, please raise your hand using the Reactions tab or send a message to the host. Each speaker will have three minutes to share their comments. Do we have any takers on Zoom?
No.
Great, thank you. Last chance for chambers. Seeing none, that will conclude our public comment period, and we will return to Councilmembers to ask questions or offer any comments. Councilmembers. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to wish Mr. Connell and his staff luck in finding a new location for the transportation center. I know that you're outgrowing your current location, so hopefully that'll move along in the coming year.
We're getting closer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I am happy to entertain a motion. I move that the Committee of the Whole make a recommendation to the Council for adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-13. Okay, I rescind that. I move that the Committee of the Whole make a recommendation to the Council for the adoption of Appropriation Ordinance 2025-12. Clerk Bolden, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Sulek?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Great. With a vote of 7-0, that appropriation ordinance passes as well. Moving right along into Appropriation Ordinance 25-11 -- or 2025-11, the Council will now receive a presentation from Jessica McClellan, City Controller.
Good evening, Council. Jessica McClellan, City Controller. I respectfully request your consideration and approval of Ordinance 2025-11, the budget for the civil city of Bloomington, for a total of $163,152,557. That is a total that has been noted -- had the public notice published in the Form 3 and the ordinance that is before you as the Form 4. We have a memo that we've submitted that goes through some of the changes that we made. The most substantial change that we made between the budget hearings and tonight is that we added 0.7% to the COLA, for a total COLA of 2.7% for all non-union, regular-appointed employees. Other employees such as police and fire already had their budgeted 3% increase for COLA. And for AFSMI, we have -- we've agreed with AFSMI to give them a 5% increase for next year, but we have not closed AFSMI negotiations yet, and those continue on their contract, but they will be getting an increase in their salary nonetheless of 5% for next year while we work on those negotiations. Those are the most substantial changes to the budget since when they presented to you in budget hearings. There have been minor corrections to things like a little bit too much health insurance or a little bit too much of the deferred compensation match, things like that in the personnel budget. We went through and audited all of that and corrected that. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have, either about the budget in total, details, things you'd like for me to follow up on, and the advertised rate.
Thank you so much, Controller McClellan, for that presentation. The floor is now open for questions from Councilmembers. As a reminder, no limit on how often a member may speak, but there is a five-minute-at-a-time requirement, so. Any questions? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. So I was trying to compare the adopted tax rates for this budget that we're being presented for next year to the one that we were presented last year for this year. Last year's packet doesn't quite align in quite the same way in terms of how things look, and so I was having a hard time doing that. So if you could just run through the differences between the tax rate this year and the tax rate last year, and how that might be reflected for people in terms of their actual bills, because at least one of them on the ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates that this year is 1.3632, last year's was 1.0414, which is definitely an increase, but then it looked like for lots of different funds, they were all a little different, and they had their own page, and I couldn't align all of them with last year's. So if you could go through that, that would be great.
Yeah, this is -- I'd be happy to go over that, and for the public and for the Council, this is the most confusing and honestly sort of nonsensical part of approving this budget, and for that, I apologize. There is -- okay, we're going to talk right now, real quick, about the ordinance. Ordinance number 2511, on the bottom of that first page, you'll see that you're adopting a tax rate of 1.36. Okay, first, throw that number out the window. That is not going to be the tax rate, and that is the most nonsensical part of this whole presentation. It's because we -- this is where the thing comes in, where we say we advertise high. That rate is advertised high. It's not going to be 1.36. We advertise a high rate because the DLGF is going to set our rate. They're going to take our actual certified net assessed value and divide it by these actual -- these are actually our budget, this is our actual budget numbers and your actual levy numbers. But the DLGF is going to come up with the perfect rate that gets us our full amount of budget, and we're going to advertise high, a high rate, so that they have a lot of leeway to give us the rate that we need. Okay, and now I'm going to talk about something that is not in your packet somewhere. This year, 2025, the City of Bloomington's actual tax rate is .8627. The actual tax rate for the City of Bloomington is .8627. And we can -- and we've estimated the actual tax rate for the City of Bloomington next year is going to be .8426. So .8627 to .8426. It'll be somewhere around .8426, somewhere around that. And we'll know when the DLGF reviews our budget, certifies our budget, and gives us our actual rate. We advertise high because there is rounding, and there is this thing where if we -- if you guys approve a rate that's like one percentage, like one hundredth of a percentage point too low, but the DLGF could have given us one percentage point higher to get us closer to our budget, we could lose out on like $10,000, $20,000. So it's not a great answer to your question, like, we can't line up, why is that 1.3% different than the 1.42% that it was last year? But I do want to tell you that we estimate that next year Bloomington Civil City's tax rate will go down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much. As always, first question is, yesterday when the county decided to bond, that raised a big question mark, right, of the -- with SEA1, et cetera. How are they able to do that?
I'll speak in general terms because I don't know exactly what they're doing. I know generally what they're doing. A six-year bond is considered a longer -- is not considered a short-term bond. If it's not a short-term bond, it's not subject to the cooling-off requirements. We did not consider a six-year bond just for general city operations like we did last year because we're considering bonds for much bigger projects right now, and we want to kind of keep our powder dry, so to speak. We're not ready to just -- like, yes, we do need to bond to -- like, our short-term bond process that we tried to start last year, like, we have to reanalyze that, and we also have big projects that we need to complete, and so we just did not consider something like a six-year bond. And it's happening because it's not a short-term bond and not subject to the cooling-off period.
That makes total sense.
As far as I know.
Yeah, yeah. And then the -- and actually, the -- thank you. You anticipated the question I was going to ask, is whether we consider that. The second question that I have was around this ongoing conversation that we've been having sort of from day one of budget about the accuracy of our projected deficit. How -- when the time in between since we started these conversations and now, how confident do you feel in the likelihood that we actually approach that deficit spending this year, which would be a unique thing in Bloomington's history?
All right. So I think what you're -- I'll give some history to like other -- to members of the public, other people here tonight, that we typically don't spend our entire budget. So when we plan for our budget next year, we have to assume we're going to spend our whole budget this year, and that typically doesn't happen, mostly because of personnel expenses that don't get spent. And so we are projecting a $9 million, $9.4 million deficit at the end of next year, but there's a very good chance that we will have less of a deficit because we might only spend 90%. We're projecting to spend about 90% of our budget this year, which will improve our deficit position this year and next year. So we estimate around 90%, which is about where we have been hovering.
Excellent. And then this is a super minor question. On -- in the packet, the -- I'm supposing that the squares on the Excel sheet weren't large enough before it was converted to a PDF, so there's five items that don't actually have numbers, but they have hashes. And I'm sure we've seen these actual numbers in another place, but maybe worth getting.
Council staff was awesome enough to send out a amendment? A packet addendum? A packet addendum? Did that come out like yesterday or the day before? And it does have, yes, it does have all the numbers. And actually, as I point to that, to that sheet, there's an error that I made on that sheet. I entered a -- there's a whole line on there about engineering, ED Lit, engineering, design and right-of-way acquisition for Collage and Walnut, and then it has a bunch of hash marks. Those hash marks should say 1.4 million. That is just an oopsie. That is not a thing. So the revised version of that will just have that. It's not even in the addendum. We just found that today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thanks for that explanation. Referring to the table that you were speaking about with the adopted tax rate of 1.36, et cetera. You've got the adopted budget, the adopted tax levy, and then the various rates. Are they -- you've overestimated, as you explained. Are they all overestimated by the same increment?
Yes, they are all overestimated by the same increment, but that only applies to funds with an adopted tax levy. So general fund, parks, MVH, the bond funds. So the adopted budget will stay the same, the adopted levy will stay the same. It's just when I -- you can't see it on this form, but this form is created by another form in which I enter the CNAV, and I enter the CNAV as $4.3 billion. Our certified net assessed value is $5.4 billion. And so that difference between 4.3 billion and 5.4, that's what makes the rate higher. So those like dollar amounts that you see will stay exactly the same, and then the rates will go down.
Okay, I see. All right. Thank you. That adds clarity.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I see in the memo about what has changed since the budget hearings that $883,699 was added to the sanitation fund support. So that's huge. I mean, it was already -- it was $700,000, so that's more than doubling what the -- is proposed to be moved from the general fund to the sanitation fund.
Yes.
Could you speak to why that is?
Yes, definitely. The sanitation fund is a self-contain fund. Think of it like a little business. It is -- all the revenue that comes from sanitation goes into one fund, and all the expenses that come from sanitation are in one fund. And it's like a simple business. We are not charging enough for sanitation, and so we're falling short on revenue. So we're going to come with -- back to you, and we're going to give you all the information about, you know, what we need, what it costs, what we're doing, what we could be doing, what we could change. We're going to come back to you, and you -- and we're going to ask the Council to decide. There's really two options. We -- or, you know, a combination of these two options. We continue to support it with general fund, which is totally fine, or we raise rates and ask the resident to pay for the actual cost of service. Right now, we're not charging for the actual cost of service, and so we will bring that information to you because we want you to make a, you know, an informed decision. And either way is fine, but you just need to know, you know, you can make that decision, and we will get out of this situation, or we can agree that we want to support it through the general fund. So right now, we're supporting it through the general fund as just kind of a way to make it work, but I feel like you guys need all the information to either to make the decision of what you really want to do with that, with that service that we decision of what you really want to do with that, with, with that service that we provide as a city.
Yes, we had that discussion two years ago. Even, I, and I understand there's a subsidy for sanitation services, but why is this, this is more than half a million dollars increase between last year, 2024 actuals, and what you're proposing for 2026? So have the expenses gone that much higher, or what is going on?
I went back and this, again, this information, well, we will bring this information all to you in more detail. It's not in this packet. I went back and looked at what the actual general fund support has been over the years, and it's been, it does hover around, you know, like 900 to a little bit over a million. 1.5 is high, a lot of, and we will be coming back to you this year for more support in the sanitation fund. We don't know what that will be yet because we want to wait till the end of the year because we only want to ask for exactly what we need. I don't think it will be 1.5 million next year because of things like employee retention, like vacancies and employment, that kind of thing. But to balance the budget, we have to advertise, we have to advertise for that kind of revenue support in the general fund. I don't think that we will actually need that much next year, but that is what is needed, like, sort of on paper, to make, to make our actual expenses. If every position is filled and we spend as much as we have budgeted for like fuel and repair and supplies and uniforms, if we spend everything that is budgeted, we will need that much, but there's a very good chance that we won't spend that much. However, we usually subsidize it by around a million dollars, and I don't think we will need 1.5 million next year, but we will need around a million unless we change something.
So between the budget hearings and today, or the creation of this packet, the, I guess the expenditures must have increased. Can we see the new sheets that show how they've increased?
That, oh, gosh. That was an aspirational budget on, on our, on our part, purely, purely on my part. I thought that we would be able to find a way to cut their expenses, to get it down to make 700,000 work, and we, we could not. We did not. And we did not increase, we increased their expenses by like the AFSMI contract, only by salaries. We did increase their budget through salaries, but we did not increase any of their other kind, other expenses. And I, we should, I should have presented a budget to you in the budget hearings that had more of general fund support, but I thought that there would be a way, that I could find a way to make it work, and I could not.
All right.
That's purely, yeah, all that it is. I, I think if I showed you, I don't think I have that version of those, those like financial reports with the 700. I mean, I could easily recreate it, and it would have showed a deficit budget. I think there might have been a deficit budget in the budget book, but.
That's the end of my time for now, so thank you.
Councilmember Stasburg?
I'll follow up on that a little bit, just for some clarity. So I think I just heard you say that sanitation is going to need an additional appropriation for 2025.
Yes.
Okay. And what, what I heard, because I asked Director Wason about this during his presentation too, because the 700,000 that was budgeted was substantially less than past years, and he said, well, you know, worse comes to worse, we'll just need an additional appropriation next year. So what you just said is to basically make it work out on paper to the satisfaction of the state, we have to additionally budget the, the subsidy now, even if it doesn't get used later?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, yes, that is very true. And like, it's like a budget in, in actual, like, every day, every month, we check that fund, and it's hovering right around zero. And then over time, it gets further, and, you know, it gets more and more and more into the negative, and then at the end of the year, we come back and we bring it back to zero. And then we hope, you know, we hope that the revenues next year will cover the costs, and they never do, and they, they're not going to, until we raise them. Like, it's just not, it's just, it just doesn't make any budgetary sense. So now we have to do something. But, you know, there's options. The city could decide, literally, it can be your choice to fund it with the general fund. That's totally fine, but I just want you to have all the information and you to make that choice.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I had one other unrelated question, but now I can't, I can't find it, so I'll just.
Other question? Oh, Councilmember Asari?
Hello. First, just, well, actually, let me ask the other question because I lost my train of thought on that, on that point. The, when we, when we talked about the increasing COLA, we had originally proposed cutting a handful of things, particularly around, I think, consulting fees and studies and the like. Did those get cut or, or?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I can tell you that.
Yeah, tell us that, because that wasn't the, what was removed from the budget was not in the memo.
Yeah. The most substantial one is I cut 127,000 from legal services, special legal services in the legal department. And if you remember, there was like a, just around 900,000 special legal services, and it was definitely like a cushion. We never really, we never spend that much. It might be used, it's nice to have, and I thought that was a great place to transfer that, some of that into the COLA. And then there, like, that's just general fund. And then there's other funds that don't really have that much cushion, but they didn't, they didn't have that much I needed to cut. So I found, I found things like, I don't know, uniforms look like, you know, you, you budget this much and you only spend 75% most years, so I cut a little bit out of something like that.
Following on then on the question of sanitation, just general information, how, can we set rates in the middle of the year? Does that happen once a year during, does, do the rates for sanitation get set during budget, or can we change those at some point during the year?
Those don't get set during budget. They, I've never done a sanitation rate set, so I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I believe sanitation comes, public works comes, you, the council approves like a multi-year range, and so we, that was, I think that was done in 2022 or 2023. So that range is set, and then like every three or four years, they have to come back and, and kind of do this presentation of what they need.
Does anyone know if that's able to, can you interrupt that process? Is it a?
I'm sure you can.
Yeah, so, okay.
It's your ordinance, you can do whatever you want with it. Yeah. Cool. I mean, I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
Do, I do, I do like this advice generally.
I'm in the do-whatever-you, do-whatever-you-can camp.
Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
So going back to the memo about what had changed, I don't understand how the general fund budget deficit decreased about 2 million dollars when we had to increase the salaries. So there were more cuts than the increases? I don't understand. Because in the, the deficit in the budget book was 11 million, and now it's 9.48 million?
Now it's 9. something. We made a lot of corrections. Come on, help me. Oh, was that 2 million dollar correction? We made the one big, and I don't think we knew where, it was just a math error. It was correct in New World, but wrong in the budget book, as I remember. Oh, yeah. There are. Gretchen reminded me, and I, there, it's like literally like the sausage, making the sausage is not pretty. Like, there was a over 2 million dollar error somewhere between what was in New World and what was in the budget book. So that was corrected. I mean, it's, I didn't cut hardly anything. I just. Because we export from ESD and the budgets that we sent in. Remember when we made new categories for ESD and some of the other ones for divisions, and then it didn't export right? And the numbers looked wrong in the budget book? I think that's what it was. Exporting, I really, yeah, this is really embarrassing because I don't remember exactly how it happened, but it's, it's better. Exporting things from ESD to, from New World to the budget book. I made changes. Yeah, please. Gretchen App, deputy mayor. So in this year's budget, she had done some things differently with ESD's budget as it's set up in New World. For example, splitting it in ways so that they could see what are they spending on their three different areas, arts, sustainability, and economic development. Actually, there's four. TDM is the other one. And so when she did that, you may recall, when we look through their, their budgets and the exported pages, those long line ones, some of you pointed out like, these, these can't be right because these numbers are missing. I think that's where the error happened, because we'd made this change in how those budgets were structured. Those sheets are exported through a macro. Otherwise, it takes a whole week to do them. So we made a macro last year, and the macro didn't account for some of these new divisions that we made. They're really just for ESD to be able to track their own expenses internally better, but it created a problem in the export. And so when we went back and corrected that, then we learned that the numbers that appeared in the budget book had carried over that error from the export. They were correct in New World, it just didn't export correctly because of the, the way the macro was structured. I think that's what happened.
I actually, I have a little time left. May I ask another question? So it's good to hear that the Ask Me employees will get a 5% raise. Is that, I assume, I mean, was that, was there enough padding in the budget to allow for that?
Yes, there is. We did not have to do, make an increase because we had already built some padding into the budget for something for them. Yes.
Oh, good. Okay.
It's, it was a lump sum in the other personal services line, and so now we're going to go and make those adjustments before the beginning of next year into each one of those salary lines, and it won't change, and then remove that total amount from each one of those other personal services lines. And the to, the total of those personal services lines won't change. It's just moving, we'll just move it within the budget.
Within category one?
Yeah, within category one, within each fund, within each department. It's already set up in each department that has AFSMI employees. So it's not at all like last year where we had 6 million dollars in the human resources fund and we had to, or account, and we had to move it to all the different funds. It's already in where it needs to be.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilmember Stasburg?
Since you mentioned the personal services line, I, this is like nitpicky and weird maybe, and probably it has something to do with how the state wants you to report it, but on those, on that budget estimate, the budget Form 1, the category is personal services, but all the personal services are spent on personnel. So it, why, why isn't it personnel? Why is it personal services? I.
Let me get down there.
I just.
Go through.
Find that nonsense going because those two words are so close to each other. It just feels like it's an, a language error, but it's so consistent that I don't think it possibly can be, but I just would like to know why.
One thing I don't like is that it says personal services. I wish it said personnel services.
Well, right, that's what I mean. Like, why doesn't it say personnel services? Is that just a state thing?
Yeah, that's, that, all that, that whole entire form is filled out by like a little, like wizard that I entered those dollar amounts into. Like, I have a, there's a dropdown, and I pick tho, and we pick those categories, and and there's only personal, like, that's salaries and wages, personal services. Like, I just pick those categories and I, and then enter the amounts. So I don't have control over any of that.
Okay, so there's not a personnel category?
Let's see, the, it, yes, there, the category, right, there is not a category that says personnel. It should say personnel. I don't know why it says.
Okay.
Personal services. That's just not a thing.
It's really personal, honestly.
It's very personal.
Why are we getting so personal on a budget sheet? I, I don't know about that.
Trust me. I spent a lot of time changing, I can change the wording in where, in the column that says line item, and you'll notice, hopefully, all of those say personnel services.
I believe so, all the ones that I have looked at, I did not necessarily.
I don't have any control over that column that says personal services.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Asari?
Thank you. First, this might be a very, just a silly question, or maybe I'm uninformed. On, on Form 4B at the end of it, the total is 163152557. Yes? At the end of the?
Oh, up there.
Yeah, and in the, in the memo, the number is 162556352. And I wasn't listening carefully enough when you introduced the budget a second ago and, and gave the number in great eloquence.
All right, let's see here. We're going to go to, that's transit.
But you know what's a million dollars between friends, you know?
And then 25, 11. So the form.
Form 4, I don't know if it's Form B, I think it's just 4.
Form 4.
Yeah.
So you have to take the total on the first page, which is not, this may not, fingers crossed, this adds up to the memo. The total on the first page is 110 million, 184,108. And then you add that to 52,968,449, and that is, I just added it today, is 163152557. All right, and let's check, the memo is on page 73. Oh, boy. Total budget is 160, it says 162556352. I think that is because the memo, we, we have the memo from, with the total from New World, and what we're advertising in the budget is slightly higher because the rate for the cum cap development fund is advertised slightly higher. And it's producing, it is actually producing a higher budget than what we are approving, than what we are going to use, and that what we are going to get, just for that one fund, because it is a rate-controlled fund. These are.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I, I apologize, these are very complicated things that it takes, it just, I don't know. I don't want to bore, like, I don't want to go over it ad nauseam with you every budget hearing. It's going to be okay. I hate that I have to tell you to trust me because I know you have to approve this and vote on this.
I mean, I, I trust you, but, but.
And the public, you know, the public has, and you have to report back to the public. It will, it will be right.
Okay. And I think, I think maybe, maybe the, the motivation of asking the question, to your point about the public, I mean, we, you know, the county last year made an accounting error that had a, right, so, you know, so, you know, a million dollars, you know, maybe. So I'm here, so just, just double checking that. And then in the change, I mean, still pulling, and then I have, I have this question, and then if I have time, I'll ask one last question, but the, pulling on this thread again of the changes. We had talked a lot during budget, budget proposal preparation, and then also in the budget hearings about the sort of circuit breaker, to be honest, don't totally understand it, but the, the impact on the circuit breaker with SEA1 and all of that, did that go down or up between, because I know that there were some changes in estimates and actuals sort of between first preparation of the proposal and now? Was there any change in, in that impact between now and, and what we're seeing today?
There isn't any change. The change, the amount of money that we're going to lose to circuit breakers is baked into the, is baked into the budget in the, in this way that it's, it's, in our, in our budget, in our internal budget in New World, it's baked into the amount of money we're going to collect from property taxes. So if we're going to collect 27 million dollars from property taxes, but we know we're going to get a million dollars in losses, we're only budgeting for 26 million in property taxes. However, when we advertise and approve the budget, it's not baked in. We're advertising and approving the full amount of property taxes we think we're going to get. And that's just the way the forms work. And that's just the way the forms work, and that's just the way approving the budget works. So there's sort of like, the budget we know that we're gonna actually get and use is slightly different from the budget that we're advertising and approving because things like the property tax, the losses to the property tax credits aren't included in that full levy number. We're not going to get that full levy. Things like the rate being a little bit higher, and that affects the cum cap development fund and what we advertise for that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I truly wish that it was more transparent, like, from the state down in that respect.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I'd just like to get down to, well, no, actually, I want to take a higher view, 10,000-foot view. So most of our budget, how much of our budget is property taxes and how much is income taxes? Can you remind us?
Okay. I have property taxes up in front of me right now. All right, I write this down, 40, property taxes, and this is general and the G O bonds, parks and rec, M V H, and the cum cap development fund, 46 million, 216,00542.
But what, what percent of our budget is that? Was that maybe in your introduction in August?
Of our revenues? Don't know. Don't know the percent.
I see, it's 37.4.
There was a revenue chart in the budget book, and it should be pretty close.
Yeah, so, I, I'm sorry, I have it, 37.4%, and then local income tax is 33.1%. So when we look at the well-being of Bloomington into the future, since a majority comes from those two sources, what should we be, be focused on? I mean, the, we, we get the, the total assessed value of properties in our county, right? And that's what the property tax rates, what deter, ultimately determines the property tax rates, is that right?
Yeah, the total assessed value. The total assessed value determines that, and really, our, how much we raise in taxes is kind of out of our control. It raises by 4% every year. It's a, like, if you have 30, if you raise $38,000 this year, you can raise 39, 40,000 dollars next year.
But the rate is the levy divided by the.
The assessed value.
Certified net assessed value.
Yeah.
Right? So we need to make sure that we, we, we keep growing that certified net assessed value, right?
Yeah, yeah. This is a very complex question. It's a very, very good question. I think that there are a lot of voices in the room that have things to add to this conversation. I am, I think we have to think about growth, but you have to think about costs. I mean, I hear what Dave Rollo's saying, you always have to think about costs associated with growth. Growth can raise your assessed value, growth can increase your income tax, you know, the well-being of the citizens, you know, what does that mean? You know, low, citizens want low taxes, and also citizens want good services. It's, it's a very complicated balancing act, and I, I think all of us, what do you, do you want, do you want to speak?
I, I really didn't want to get into that.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted, also for the public to understand, you know, where do our revenues come from?
Oh, yes.
And how is that figured?
Uh huh.
And the income tax, it's only for people who live in the city limits, right? That, that's the only income tax we get as part of our government revenues, is that right?
We, as of, right now, we get income tax from the whole county, but it will change to only people within, in city limits in 2028.
Okay, so currently, we get a proportion of the counties?
We get a proportion of it based on our population.
Okay.
So everybody in the county pays into, and then pays into the local income tax, and then that lump sum is, is given to us by a percentage of our population. But starting in 2028, only payers who actually live in the city will pay into the city local income tax.
Okay.
So that does change the, the dynamics of who the payers are and what that income is.
And if there, if there are people who live in Martinsville and come down here to work, their income taxes are going to Morgan County, right?
Correct, correct, correct.
And conversely, if we have somebody who lives in Bloomington but works in Martinsville, their income taxes are coming to Monroe County.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to, you know, kind of help explain to, to people how, how we get these revenues, how it's calculated, and.
Yes.
And I, I agree, it's, it's more complex than, like, we need to keep growing.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's a whole nother conversation that is worthy. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for asking.
Councilmember Sari?
Last question, promise. The, so, so just sort of wrapping up all my, my questions this evening is that if, say what? Oh, if, if it's the case that we're fairly certain that we'll get more into deficit spending probably than we have in the past, like, we, we're probably going to spend a bit more than we have. And, and when we talked about it during budget season, budget season, the budget presentations, you all sighed a sigh of relief when we said, for example, that we didn't want as many studies or things like that, and then you say, yeah, we're happy to cut those things. And then now, we haven't actually cut those things, we found other places to cut. My question, and I get that this is somewhat open-ended, but why not be more aggressive with, with our cuts? If, if there's still some areas that, at some point, there was some relief to, to try to cut, so like, why, why are we not being super aggressive with cuts here?
The, it's because cutting things is a domino effect. And cutting things like a study has a domino effect, and I will say that we were, it was very good for us to understand that there isn't a huge appetite for more studies, and we'll definitely take that into consideration in future budgets. By the time between the budget hearing and the budget adoption, we just didn't feel like was the right time to actually dig into those kinds of cuts, especially for planning studies. It just, like, pulling the thread, it's sort of pull the string, it's, it can sort of, it can really, would you like to add anything else?
I think it's a great question, and I think if we had more time between the budget hearings and making that discovery, now we might have been able to have those discussions. But for now, we'd rather put it in the budget and then not spend it. You know, look, sit down, we have more time, look at it and say, okay, what's the impact of if we cut this study that is tied to something else in the transportation plan and is a precursor to this other thing, what's the ripple effect of that? And, and I think we all know this, but just to say it out loud, cutting the money from the study doesn't necessarily make there be enough money by far to do more, which is, one of the things I took away from your comments was less study, more building.
Sure.
But the building is way more expensive, and so cutting the studies won't make it possible to build more.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's sort of, you know, this is both maybe, it's pseudo question, you know, comment on it, but the, that, that question of dependencies, I get, right, that, that it's, you know, you pull this, and we haven't had the time to track what those dependencies are, in short. But I, I, I think something that we should maybe, you know, consider some type of a doctrine for, some, this is a strategy for, in the context of our, you know, and then also thinking about future revenues and pressures that we're going to face, you know, I, I think that we should perhaps be study, be ourselves thinking about those dependencies and as they unfurl, saying, actually, you know, we're not going to touch some of the money that has been budgeted because of the fact that we realize that's not, you know, super essential right now, even though we have the authority to do it, just sort of thinking ahead of, of making sure that we, both keeping the powder dry, I get, and also keeping our flexibility as much as possible to sort of difficult decisions that we're making ahead. You know, I think that the thing that I've said throughout these budget hearings is in the, in the cases, and I'm very grateful, and I think that we should continue to repeat what you've said very clearly here, and I will continue to repeat this, that the city's in a really good position financially, and even after approving a deficit budget, even if we spent that deficit budget, we're still in a good position financially. I think that's fantastic, but I do think that we need a strong sort of theory of change of like, when you spend deficit and what is deficit spending on. And, you know, and I, and I think to your point about dependency, I think, I think we haven't, you know, I don't think we've really had, had the time to really formulate that, but I think moving forward, it's something that throughout this next year, as we're continuing to make further transitions and how we're budgeting, et cetera, it would be really good also to come up with some strong sense of what, you know, what we're trying to do there, so.
Yes, yes, thank you for, yes. You echo our concerns. It's, it's great to hear council members voicing, you know, you yourself and other council members voicing those kinds of concerns and thoughts, and as you all know, the budget is a, is a huge, this is a huge, complex budget, and we appreciate your interest and, yeah, your, your thoughts and help on that throughout next year and the future.
Thank you. Any other council member questions? Okay, in that case, we will move to the public comment section. Controller McClellan, thank you for your presentation. This section constitutes a public hearing held in accordance with Indiana Code Title 6, Article 1.1, Chapter 17, Section 3. If you are in chambers, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and sign in on the sheet. Seeing none, if you are joining via Zoom, please raise your hand using the reactions tab or send a message to the host.
We do have an online commenter, I will unmute them.
Great, thank you. And online commenter, please state your name, and you will have up to three minutes to give your comment. Thank you.
Yes, Kevin Keough. And keep in mind, my intention is to add value and also the goal of transparency. The City of Bloomington's A C F R, the audit report, is not for 123124, has not been available for the council and for the public to look at. And I think it would be of great value when you're discussing the 2026 budget. Also, Isabel had a question that went, that was answered in the, the budget book, and it's on page 87, it's page 12 of the answers. But it, it talks about the audit. And specifically, my concern, especially after the discussion this evening, is about the completion, the 2023 was completed in mid-July, July 17th, and that's a year and a half afterwards. And I noticed in the answer, it talks about the audit is due September 30th. And, you know, I, I've been an auditor for, over 40 years, and I, and I've closed a lot of books and done audits. Usually, you want those audits to be timely, and usually what I mean timely, you know, 90 days, you know, 60 to 90 days after year end, you want them done. You want to close the books, get it behind you. And it seems the answer says something about a due date of September 30th, which has concerned me, and I tried to, you know, Google it and look it up, and I get conflicting information, and it talks about April 1st, that being the due date for the audit. So yeah, I'd like to see that clear, plus that's, again, adding value. I, I would really emphasize how, you know, closing the books, getting the audit done within a timely period. And 90 days, I believe, is a, is a timely period. It really helps you when you start preparing this year's budget and getting prepared for the discussions we're having tonight. And it, it just cleans things out. So I'm very concerned about that. And another reason, as a member of the public, why I'm concerned, and these are actual numbers, my numbers, I know they're correct, my property taxes increased over 20% last year. It was 20.69%. The three years before that, it averaged over 10 and 1/2% each year. So my property, this is why it's so important, and these discussions are so important. It's, this is not sustainable. And, you know, as a lifelong citizen of Bloomington, I know you talked about COLA, you know, cost of living has been 4 and 1/2, and this year maybe under 3%. Look at these percentages, the property taxes have been increasing. I know my time's coming up. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any other takers on Zoom? Anyone in chambers? Okay, thank you. That concludes our final public comment period, and now we'll go back to council members for additional questions and comments. Councilmember Stasburg.
I just have a closing comment, I suppose. Councilmember Sari's comment about studies reminded me of the answer, so in the packet, Councilmember Piedmont Smith asked planning about those corridor studies. She kind of followed up on that, and part of the answer there made me feel a little bit better about it. Part of the answer was that the corridor studies maintain relevance for longer than engineering studies and differentiating between an engineering plan and a corridor study. And, and also that, once you do the study, then you just have more information with which to budget with. And so in, in my mind, in terms of differentiating that and making, and keeping those things in the budget, that answer gave me a lot of clarity, so I just want to point that out in case folks didn't see that. I also wanted to, I suppose, speak sadly, following up about the sanitation needs, and it's never pleasant to think about potential rate increases, and I know we have this water rate increase, electrical rates have increased, utilities are, it feels like they're just increasing all over the place multiple times, and it's, it's really not great, but we're also faced with the reality of an increased cost of doing business, and then an expected future of decreased revenues, and having to tighten in different places. And so that's, just wanted to lift that up as something that I'm cognizant of and that it's really challenging to think about balancing all of those competing, competing forces. And then the last thing that I wanted to, especially with regard to Mr. Keough's comment about taxes increasing, is differentiating the difference between our tax rate, which has not particularly increased, and the assessed valuation of our properties. And it's the assessed valuation of properties in Bloomington that has gone up a lot in the last, I would say maybe even five years. It has gone up a lot, my property taxes, the, the bottom line number of how much I have to pay. It is kind of astounding at how much I was paying, say, 10 years ago versus how much I'm paying here now. But I also want to point out that the actual tax rate, if you look at your tax bills, is quite low. And for a long time, our family also held property in, in Wayne County, Indiana, because that's where we moved from, and we could not sell our houses there very easily, so I was also paying property tax there. And my property tax rate for Wayne County, Indiana, was twice that as it was here in Monroe County, twice. But the actual dollar amount I was paying was half because the property values in Wayne County were so much lower, are so much lower than property values in Monroe County. So it is a double-edged sword when your home is worth a lot because then you're, you're paying more in taxes. But that assessed value is something that we can't control. We can't control that. As, as city council, as the city, as Controller McClellan was saying, you know, we only have so much control over property taxes, and, and the rate has stayed pretty stable over the last several years, right about 2-ish percent, I think, in terms of what goes to city taxes. So anyway, those are the things that I wanted to just speak to during this comment time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Stasburg. Councilmember Rollo?
Yes, could, could I follow up with a question? For Controller McClellan. Could I ask, Controller, could I, could I ask a quick question, just as a follow-up? Because the A C F R that Mr. Keough referenced, could you, could you explain the, the lack of posting and when it will, and, and what, do you have a comment about timeliness of, of that for?
When we started this Mayor Thompson's administration in January of '24, the 2022 Act F R, is what we refer to it, had just been completed in December of 2023. And so we have spent the last year and a half catching up on Act F R's that haven't been completed timely. So we caught up on '23. No, actually, the 2021 had just been completed when we, when Mayor Thompson took office. Then last year, we completed the 2022, we did the 2023, and we're working on the 2024 right now. So we hope to have the 20, we will have the 2024 done by the end of the year. done by the end of the year. And then next year, we will be on a normal cycle of having those completed by September 30 of the year. And then the April 1 deadline is for, there is a, there's a smaller financial report due to the state on April 1. It's called the Annual Financial Report. It's the AFR. It's a much more smaller, it's not as detailed as the ACFR. That's the April 1 report. And those have all been completed timely. But
Yeah, I see that on the website. Well, hopefully, that satisfies Mr. Keough. So thank you for that. That that's very good. I just wanted to say, express my appreciation for the 0.7% increase in COLA. You know, we fell behind in the early 20s when inflation was ramping up. The administration at that time did not keep pace. It was a real worry for a lot of us. I know that we had to play catch up. And I appreciate this administration's raising the salaries as per the as per the salary study. And I appreciate that we're keeping up with the CPI. Also recognizing that, you know, we live in a city that's 19% more expensive than most cities in Indiana, and 4% more expensive than the national average. So if that continues pace, then we're, you know, people are challenged in this community financially. And we want to make sure that as a major employer, and of course, that that the employees of the city are are compensated. So I appreciate your your work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Any other comments or final questions? In that case, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I would like to move that the committee of the whole make a recommendation to the council for the adoption of appropriation ordinance 2025-11.
Clerk Bolden, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
With the vote of 6-0, that passes. And we have come to the conclusion of all of our agenda items on our Committee of the Whole meeting. So I will entertain a closing motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned.